Brokaw, Ken, here. Julie.
Here.
Michelle.
Here.
I'm here. Judy.
Here.
Janet.
Here.
Mr. Police Officer.
There.
Darrell.
I think that's it. Agenda for October 24. Go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I was supposed to say September 16.
Okay, that's a canter. We'll let you buy on that. Okay, I got a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, meeting minutes from August 16, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 16.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pay bills. I make a motion to go ahead and approve to pay the bills. Have a motion to pay the bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion has. Clerk Preacher.
As of this morning, the general account had $2,368.52. Police account has $62,822.40. The community account has $60,624.54. The court account has $71,987.24. And the Empress account was $15,092.13. And then I just wanted to add that I went to Amcat training last week in Casper. I was there Tuesday through Friday in classes. I went really good. I met clerks from all over the different places. And I learned a lot not only from the other clerks I talked to, but also from the classes. And I'm actually excited to go back next year already.
I got a question for you while we're on clerk treasure. Have we paid Surenown this? This, oh, that's this month, isn't it? Surenown comes due this month.
Who's that coming through that room?
It's about $18,000 each.
No? Is it from them?
Sliver.
I have not seen that paper, but as soon as I do, I will pay it.
I'll have to look them up.
Uh, where are we at? Court, Janet.
Oh, okay. So you guys will have my report in your packets. So in August, we received $49,688 in payments. That includes citation payments, deferral payments, and then the bond payments that we got in July that I held until August. You see the citations written and how the payments are going. They have court this Friday, the 20th. Jeez, September 20th. That's what happens when you...
Don't.
Don't. Don't worry, you can use the old one. September 20th, there is still one bench trial scheduled, and there's a bunch of columns. And then we just have those two grants that are sort of outstanding until we can get off the state's list. And that's it. And then attached to your is the collections report for court, which includes the transfer request that I just gave except to Michelle today, and then the next statement for August.
Okay, we don't have the police report on here. Do we have anything, Officer Remma?
No.
Okay. Maintenance, water, sewer, streets, and alleys.
Basically, everything's going well. As most of you have probably seen, we did go ahead and get the new tractor. We got the roads bladed, or I got the roads fixed on First Street. Did a lot of thank yous for that. There was quite a few potholes in that street. We're getting ready to close the irrigation down this season. We'll water heavy this week, and then we'll pick up pipe next week. And then we'll get into the rest stuff we've got to finish this year as sludge judging the sewers, fixing some valves, and pumping the sewer. We pumped a couple, no, yeah, we pumped two tanks last week, which were in dire need. So we got that done. We've got two more we're gonna do this year, because we try to do four a year. And we need to, well, we got three done this year. We need one more done. But that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Water Board, Dennis isn't here. We have the police report. Let's go to new business. Troy's resignation. Do I have the motion to accept Troy's resignation? She'll move. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Julie?
I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Oh, okay.
Motion carries.
Sorry, my ear's saying quarter pen.
I got the same problem.
Uh, Mayor Brokaw. Since Troy quit, uh...
Sorry, sir, did you need us get number one with your new business?
We had to...
We just did that.
That'll be...
No, our line says...
That first one has to go to...
Mine says Janet raise on the...
That's gonna go to executive session.
Yeah, that was my fault.
Okay, I just didn't want to think I was missing something.
Mayor Brokaw. Since Troy resigned, I'm going to appoint Judy, Mayor Brokaw, and Michelle Bacon. And if you guys will approve it. Judy, will you accept?
No.
Okay, I, uh, do I have a motion to accept Judy as Mayor Brokaw?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Judy, you second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alita, you're up.
I am up. I'm here tonight. My name's Alita Driver. I know everybody, but okay, let me introduce. I am with Guardian Flight. It is an air ambulance membership program. And I'm just here tonight to give a little bit of info for you. So I will just, can I approach? Can I approach? These are just little pamphlets so you guys can see what I'm talking about. Make a chair. Oh, I was gonna say. He's looking through it though. Like I said, I'm with Guardian Flight Air Ambulance Membership. We offer membership at, um, for flights at no cost, no out-of-pocket cost. You have to be flown with us, with Guardian, or if you are, there's a map in there. If you are traveling, we have sister companies that you, that can fly you also if you're traveling to another state. Okay, so there's a little map in there and you can see. We offer one year, three year, five year, 10 year, on up. Air ambulance costs can be detrimental, young and older. This program, I have got to actually see it in action before that. I really liked the idea, just because my husband is flight nurse with Guardian. And so, you know, you hear people being flown and how much it costs. But then my mom is also a member, and she was flown three times this last year for a heart attack. And she received a very nice letter from Guardian with a zero balance. So I, when they offered me the job, I kind of jumped at it because I, I just think it's a really neat program. If you have insurance, they will bill your insurance, but your leftover is no charge to you. If you do not have insurance, like my mom, we had Medicare P, which is hospital. They took care of the whole flight, the whole cost. If you're 60 and over, for a year, it's only $79. 60 and younger is $99 a year. Obviously, if you go higher years, you get a better discount. Like I said, the thing of it is, is Guardian has to fly you. And at times, uh, due to weather being grounded because of weather, or if all their aircrafts in the state are busy, that would be the only time that they would not be able to fly you. But other than that, they are available. We do have a few bases. We have one in Gillette, we have Riverton, and Lander, and Cody, and Warburg. So we have fixed wings and rotors, helicopters. So we have quite a few aircrafts available. And it's just nice to have this little extra, just sometimes our other resources don't cover the whole thing. I'll leave some flyers if you guys don't mind, at the desk over there.
I didn't come two months ago before Derek was called.
But I just got the job like a few weeks ago.
Have you made any sales yet?
And I...
Have you made any sales yet?
Yes, I've done, actually, I will, but I've been practicing on people that I know, so you'll give me praise.
Okay, you practice on me because I'm interested.
Okay. Do you have any questions? My work phone number is on there. That's not my regular house number or whatever, but you can call me at home too. You know.
It shows that Montana is not covered?
Sydney, we have one, we have one base in Sydney.
Okay, but it covers flights to Billings.
Right.
You just can't get members up there.
Right. We don't sell in Montana or Idaho.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's that little map in there that kind of shows over all of our bases. Like I said, we have other companies underneath, um, Air Medicare, there's Reach, there's, oh, there's Guardian, of course, Air Vac, and MedTrains.
Well, they're the ones that flew now, this guy is...
Yes, Guardians in Wyoming, that's all, that's the company we own now. So like I said, if you guys have any questions, I am available to answer anything, and I will leave brochures in the back. If you do refer someone, you will actually get three months on top of whatever years you want, and the person you refer also gets...
Oh, great, you're again.
Right?
You can't do that.
I was.
So nice to meet you. Well, like I said, if you guys have any questions, whatever, you know where I live, you know my phone number. Thank you for letting me practice.
Thank you.
No, I mean, I have just this question.
Yes.
Like when Rod got flown out, he should have been flown out, just ambulanced him. Are the hospitals aware that if we're members, they have to call them?
So, right, so I am checking into that, because we don't want that to happen, obviously. Because when you get to the hospital, you need to say, I need to be, I'm gonna have a membership with Guardian. I need Guardian to fly me. So I'm actually checking into rods to see if they did call or not, because that's not what we want to happen, obviously. So I am looking into that, just to see what happened. I just kind of need a little more information, like maybe a better date or month.
Okay. So my next question is, is there certain criteria before they go fly them?
So if, you know, the hospitals, the doctors will determine if you're medically needing to be flown. So they make that decision. Then if you need to be flown, Guardian will fly you at no out-of-pocket cost.
Okay, so, yeah. Because I'm thinking maybe he was just stable enough to, no, have to be flown.
Right. But I am checking, we kind of talked about the other day, and that's not a way, because we don't want that to happen, obviously. But, and, and, you know, it's one of those things too, like I said, whether, or if they were busy, I'll find out though. And they can't fly, and that's kind of a little bit of gamble, but the price over what the flight would be is...
Oh, yeah, kind of, yeah. No, I already read it. It's worth it.
Yes, it is. And like I said, I got to see the, the actual action with my mom, and, and I was just kind of amazed that it's, it is what it says, so. And the term and conditions are in there too. Always look at those when you're presented with memberships or, obviously, insurances. Always look at your terms and conditions, so.
So one more question.
Sure. I like, this helps me, no, this, this helps me a lot.
Are they ever going to include ambulance rides in that?
So at this point, in the state of Wyoming, we don't have our ambulances. Other places, they do, and then other states, they have fly you home options and stuff. Wyoming does not at this time. Hopefully, down the road, we'll be able to, but as right now, we don't. We just have the air ambulance emergent plan, so.
How old is Guardian the company?
Oh, man, well, Clark's been with them 10 years. So I, I'm not sure.
Good question.
I don't know.
You can tell me when he comes.
At least, at least 10 years. So, but I said, y'all know where I live and phone number.
Thank you, Alita.
Oh, thank you for letting me.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, the next on the agenda is the office. Julie, I want to thank you for everything that you've done for us. Now that we've, we've got a clerk that can run things, I'm going to put her as office manager, and she will be in control of the office.
Okay.
Uh, if... If, if anybody needs anything, you'll go to Michelle. She's been doing a darn good job, so I want to get her moved up and be one like she is part of the team. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's move on. Mayor comments? I don't have any right yet. Cardi?
Oh, she's here.
Okay, if we can adjourn to executive session at 7:50 for personnel. Do I have a motion to...
6:50.
6:50, I'm sorry. Second?
He's just wishing someone sort of to be there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is, let's see if I can get it probably to 6:55.
Good job.
Do I have a motion to return to regular meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We discussed, uh, two things in executive session, personnel issues. One was a raise for Janet. She's been here quite a while, and it's been quite a while since she's had a raise. And the other thing we discussed is giving Darrell a cost of living raise. Let's go one at a time. Do I have any comments on giving Janet a raise?
I think that Janet should have the same as the clerk got $2 an hour.
Any, any discussions?
I agree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We made a motion.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, I said all those in favor.
Yeah, but we need to make a motion.
Thanks. Okay, do I have a motion to give $2? So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we, we discussed, uh, giving Darrell a raise. He's been with us for quite a while. He's been doing a, a good job. And we're, we're talking cost of living raise. And then, then there could be more later on, but right now, it's just going to be cost of living. Do I have any discussion?
I guess I'll discuss it. Everybody else does. Till we go through the books and see where we're at for the year, I think right now, most companies give between a 2% and a 4% cost of living raise. I think we're going to middle right now, 3%. Then once we get to get through the books and everything, if we can give a little more for the cost of living raise, then we can increase that at another meeting.
Any other comments, questions? Do I, yes?
Respectfully, I would ask that you match my raise to Darrell's raise. So if you're giving him a 3% raise, then you give me a 3% raise instead of $2, which is quite a bit more than 3%.
I can hear what she's saying.
Yeah, I missed that too.
She, she said that she thinks we ought to make equal raises, where she's getting $2 an hour. She's getting more than what Darrell would at 3%.
Yeah, but we would have to go back into executive session, do that, number one. And number two is, uh, you're hourly and he's salary, so.
But we, we didn't say that this was the end of it. We've got to go through and see what our year was. And if, if our year was good enough, then we can do a step raise or increase the, the, the value of the cost of living raise. We just, we don't want to leave Darrell out of the, the process. So this is a good place for us to start, and then we can discuss it after we get more information on what we have in the cop shop, uh, you know, our expenses and everything like that. It's, it's not that we're trying to not give you a raise that you deserved, Darrell. We just got to, we gotta see where we're at. If we don't, we're not doing our job. So that we, we want to start with 3%, and then later on, we can go from there. Anyone else? Do I have the motion to give Darrell a 3% cost of living increase?
So moved.
Do I? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Counsel comments?
I got them.
Okay.
Last meeting, we talked about needing a tractor, and we were supposed to go investigate that, and find what was the prices, and this is what they found, that the 2018 wasn't big enough, and to keep looking. But generally, when something is that large of a purchase, we make, we vote on it.
Yes, we did.
Not in the meeting, we didn't vote money amount.
Yeah, we voted under $30,000.
No, they voted, uh, they asked for, okay, if it was under $30,000, they could just go with it.
You didn't vote, yes, I...
Okay, just to make sure.
Do you, do you have that?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's just play it so Julie knows.
Oh, I see it in there now.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing that I missed when we passed the minutes is we put both the water reel and the tractor in the same, and, and you forget to put the water reel on here. Michelle, you just got the tractor on here. But, yeah, it was, it was motion carried, everybody, everybody added. And the deal was, we had to keep it under $30,000.
That was what the Zoom put as, um, equipment expense as actually an asset, because it has to be a depreciated asset. So I fixed that.
That's my fault, so I appreciate it. Next time, instead of just going and changing it, you come to me and teach me how to do it.
Like when we improved the cop shop, I put every, all the time we bought things. Because you can't make an asset out of a $200 purchase. I put everything into a dedicated account, and when we were done with the cop shop, I did a journal entry to move it into improvements on the building so that it's capitalized into the value of the building.
And a question for you on that. How, we paid 25 even, but I noticed on, on the deal, you put it at, at 50. Why didn't we put that at 50 and we paid 25? I thought, I thought that's what I seen when you printed it up.
No, it was only 25.
Oh, mine must have been Ross.
Well, mine aren't.
Yeah. So did Ross.
Any other? Go ahead.
Sorry, me again. I know I don't always get along with people on the council, and that's life, if I can live with that. But I have had someone in town tell me that Councilman Patrick told them that they were looking at me to be investigated for embezzlement, and that's my, that's my life.
They said I said that? That, that is an absolute lie. If I, if I had a concern like that, I'd come right straight to you with it.
Okay.
There is not, that has never been...
Once that starts going around, people start talking to me.
Well, you know how this little town is, there's a lot of little things going around that's not true.
Right.
About all of us.
Which is why I'd rather be public about it.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I just, they, they don't, I didn't say that, but they say the same things about Judy, Rod, I. I mean, we get that all the time, so.
Well, I get stuff all the time.
Absolutely. No, you've done a great job.
But that, as far as that goes, I mean, that's, that's my life work.
Well, exactly, that's what I said. I did not say that.
Okay.
So, and that's a fact.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more?
I got no comment.
Do I have motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, I say one more thing too.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
As I, no, as I was sitting here, I was like, okay, I talked about, I forgot one thing. So the membership is per household, not per person, it's per household. So everyone that lives in your household, if you have college students, they're covered also because their address and where they live is at home. So it covers everyone in the home. Parents, if they live with you, college kids, if they, you know, live with you. And you don't necessarily have to be related to each other to be in the same household. So that was one of the things.
Question. The more people you have in a household, does it go up or does it sit the same?
No, no, that's per household.
And if you've got a stranger living in your house, I mean, this covers them too?
Sure, I wouldn't recommend strangers living in your house.
Sometimes I give strangers.
You do? I don't want to hear that. But, yeah, so I just wanted to make that clear, it wasn't per person, it's per household, so.
Thank you.
That was it.
Okay, do I have motion to adjourn? I'm being so moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next regular meeting, if everybody's here, it's October camp of twenty-four.